Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast-
I'd like to welcome you to the City of Madison Board of Education School Board Meeting for August 24th, 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask Deegan from Liberty, he's an eighth grader there, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before I rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Thank you, Ms. King. Board, if you'll review the agenda, I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
A motion on Ms. Lespin and a second on Mr. Newberry. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained, the agenda is passed. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to come forward at this time. By law, we will submit a budget to the state. We will have two budget hearings. This will be the first budget hearing as she presents the potential budget for the next school year.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Nichols. I'm going to present the 2024 budget. I wanted to let everyone know that I have public response forms in the back of the room. So please, if you have any comments or whatever, please put them there. And at the end of the meeting today, I will pick them up and I'll definitely answer it. I think you have 10 days to leave a response. So this year, I had the honor to attend the 25-year legacy celebration breakfast. And so it was wonderful. I've never been to a legacy celebration, but this was great because it was for Madison City Schools. And it listed all of the accomplishments and all the goals of Madison City Schools for years and years and years. Weeks after that, there was a celebration to celebrate Madison at the Toyota Field. And Mayor Finley talked about why people will come to Madison and all of the City of Madison's accomplishments. And so I thought about it, me and Jana kind of sat down and thought about it. Well, we want to celebrate something too. So we want to celebrate Madison City as far as our financials. And so there's three points to take away from our 2024 budget. Who we are, what are our successes, and where are we financially? So who are we? So we're the 12 largest school system in Alabama. Mobile, Jefferson County, and Baldwin County are the first, second, and third systems. Currently, we're funded for 12,098 students, even though that we have 12,554 students enrolled. We have 13 schools in Madison City Schools, and that includes pre-K. And I just want you guys to have a mental picture of this slide. I am going to talk about this in a few slides later, but I'm going to talk in more detail about how we're funded, how all school systems are funded. But please make a mental note on how many students are enrolled. Who are we? So we're one of the largest employers in the city. So we have over 1,400 employees, and so communication and teamwork is key to our success. Of the 1,400 employees, 920 are teachers and administrators. And of that group, over 50% of them have a master's or higher degree. 566 are support personnel, and we have over 2,000 personnel contracts every year. Who are we? So we're the fourth-largest school system in Alabama when it comes to growth. Baldwin County, Madison County, and Houston County are the first, second, and third above us. And so what are our successes? Here are some highlights and accomplishments of Madison City Schools. We have one U.S. Presidential Scholar. We have 34 advanced placement courses. We're ranked number one in the district by niche. And we have over 100 National Board Certified Teachers. So what are our successes when it comes to other things? We are successful when we're transporting our kids. We transport 6,800 students daily. We have 184 routes, and that's done twice a day, morning and evening. We have 1,500 activity runs, 102 buses on the road, and weekly our fuel costs are over $14,000. We are also successful when we're feeding our students. In 2023, we had over, we served over 270,000 breakfasts, over 185,000 lunches, and we have an annual budget of $7 million. We have 54% of enrollment. They participate in our lunch programs. And then 20%, there is a 20% range normally for our Freedom Reduced. And the only difference on this slide is during COVID years, we didn't have to report our amounts. And so that's why we have 18 and 12% listed there. But we're normally at 20% or so. So here are a few of the budget requirements. We have to have two public hearings. It has to be conducted in a regular scheduled meeting. It has to be in a convenient time and place. And we have to publicize the date and time of all of our hearings. So the purpose of our hearings are to enhance our planning processes. We have to show our transparency and our accountability and inform the community of what we're doing, as well as provide just a public forum for input. So the budget process. Student enrollment drives everything that we do in Madison City Schools. And so enrollment drives the funding that we get for everyone. Teachers, classroom support, support staff, our auxiliary services. So that's personnel, technology, operations, CMP. And like I said, enrollment drives everything. And so if we have increased enrollment, our capital projects are increased because we need more buildings, because we need more space for our teachers, our staff, so on and so forth. And if we need more buildings, our debt increases because we have to pay for these buildings that were- The basis of our budgeting, we anticipate revenues from our state, local, and federal money, and we include this in our budget. And we're really conservative when it comes to the estimates. Our objectives for Madison City Schools is to maintain our pupil-teacher ratios in classrooms. We need to control our expenses, and we justify and identify all of our required expenses and maintain adequate fund balances. We are successful because our budget is aligned with our strategic plan. And so this plan is put together by the superintendent and the board and various employees. And so examples of that would be on this slide here. We offer after-school tutoring, highly qualified professional development for all teachers, adding counselors to support our mental health, adding STEM, art, and music for elementary schools, and then community partnerships. So why are we successful? This slide here is a historical look at Madison City's budget. Enrollment is the main driver of our increasing budget. And so if you look at the slide, at 2000, our budget was at $28 million, and currently it's at $195 million. So that is about seven times our budget from 2000. And so luckily, our enrollment has not increased by seven times, but it has doubled. And so what are our successes? So a direct correlation between population growth in Madison City and student growth is there. And so pretty much, people move to Madison for the school system. We're the number-one school system in Alabama, and more people are finding out and talking about it, and of course, moving here. So if you look at the slides from 2000 to 2023, our population has doubled, as well as our enrollment. So why are we successful? It's because we are good stewards of taxpayers' money. So if you look at the comparison on this slide here, Madison City is at number 132. That equates to $13,000 that we spend per student out of our total funds. If you look at this slide, Lowndes County is ranked at number three, and they spend almost $20,000 per student. But their budget is $22 million, and they have 1,000 students. And so for us, we strategically spend our money on items that we feel we need. AP courses, foreign languages, STEM, art, just all things that benefit the kids. And this is our local spending for per pupil spending. Madison City ranks 29, and so that equates for about $2,900 that we spend on each child. You can look on this slide from Mountain Brook, which is ranked number one. They spend about $8,800 per student, but they have 4,000 kids. Next, when we're dealing with federal money, we're ranked at 143. We're still below state average here. And it's because everything is based on our Title I and our Freedom Reduced money, and our numbers are not very high when it comes to that. So Madison City is 143, so that's about, it equates to about $1,000 per student. Whereas the number-one person, system on this is Barber County, and they spend about $5,800, and that is for 600 students. Okay. Where are we financially? So this slide here is just the road to our budgeted success. In the 2000s, we were getting started. Enrollment was low, but our goals were set. We already knew that we were trying to be the best school system in Alabama. We wanted to offer everything, AP courses, foreign language, so on and so forth, career tech, anything that we could think of. And so that's where everything started. In 2010, our budget doubled to $50 million, and our population increased to 12,000. And then we still continued the path with our goals that we set previously. In the years 2020, '21, and '22, our COVID years, our population growth still increased, and our enrollment remained steady because kids still wanted to come to this school system. And I just wanted to say, as far as COVID years, there was probably only a few systems in Alabama that had any type of growth. I mean, most of the school systems decreased by hundreds or 200. So for 2023, we're currently wrapping up this year. It's a, has been a successful year. Our population is at its highest right now, and our enrollment is over 12,000. And so on to 2024. So where are we financially for 2024? So the items are included in the budget, and here are just a few items. So we have our salary expenses reflecting ALSD salary schedule changes, which include our 2% increase for all employees, as well as our $15 minimum. We have additional staff that we've included, our mental health coordinator, I mean, sorry, counselors, as well as STEM teachers, security guards for our elementary students. In this budget, we've included Journey Middle School, Bob Jones, E-Wing, as well as our pre-K operating costs, additional debt for the new elementary school that's coming, and then we've included ongoing capital needs for the district. Where are we financially? And so this is what I wanted everyone to know. So not everyone knows that Madison City Schools or all school systems are funding in arrears. And so funding is based on the last year's enrollment. So that mental note that I was talking about earlier. We have 12,545 students, but we're funded for 12,098 students. So that is 447 students that we are unfunded for. And so that equates to about, I'm sorry, it equates to, I'm sorry. We've added 57 teachers, which equates to $2.5 million, as well as our unfunded portion of pre-K or early beginnings of $500,000. So if you really think about this, and I know Dr. Nichols has, is that if you think about how consistent our system has been, so over the last, let's say, 20 years, we've had a consistent growth of 300 to 400 kids per year. So that's $2.5 million per year for 20 years. That's $50 million that the school system spends locally, that we've spent locally. Because normally, it's $2.5 to $3 million that we spend each year locally on children that come to the school because of the growth in our school system. Where are we financially? We choose to supply services for all of our students for items that are not funded by the state or the federal government. So these are a few that we pay with our local funds, unfunded mandates. So special education, there's teachers, contracted services, and also bus aides that we fund locally. The Numeracy and Literacy Act that was decided from the state, we of course have to pay for that as well. We fund additional assistant principals, and then our transportation is only funded at 80%. Our nurses, for instance, just received a new salary schedule, but we pay over the salary schedule of the state, and so we still have to pay local money from that. We provide more counselors than the state recommends, well, not recommends, but provide this money for. And then our EL teachers are underfunded. Where are we financially? Maintenance of effort, so this is for special ed. So this is a federal requirement. So to meet maintenance of effort, LEAs must be able to expend an equal amount of local funds or a combination of state and local funds for special ed and related services that is for the prior fiscal year. So it is kind of like a catch-22. So if you have more special ed students, you of course have more expenditures, and then your local and your state funds will increase. And so you have to maintain this level of spending each year. And if not, you'll be penalized. And you can't pay this amount with any federal money. And so for an example, on this slide, in, let's say, for 2024, we have to spend at least $3.9 million for special ed services or a combination of state and local, which would be $14 million. Where are we financially? So this is our 2024 budget. I'm just, I'm going to drill down to each of the funds to separate what is included in all of this. But this is the full 2024 budget. So the general fund. It's our primary operating fund for the district. So our revenues that are included in this are our foundation program, transportation, our local taxes, our property and sales taxes are included in our revenues here. As far as our expenditures, employee costs, utilities, supplies, equipment purchases, all of that is in our general fund. Special revenue. These are, for instance, access, distance learning is included in this fund. Our federal money, child nutrition, our DODA grants are included in this, as well as all of our public funds in our local schools are included in this. Debt service. For 2024, our outstanding debt is $357 million. There, there is a considerable reduction three times on this slide. In 2033, we have a deduction of $1.5 million. In 2039, there's a $5 million deduction. And then, of course, in 2049, there's another $5 million deduction. Capital projects. So this is what we have for our major capital needs. The new elementary school is included. Athletic improvements, our HVAC renovations, as well as our security updates are included in this fund. The Expendable Trust Fund, this is for, this is held by the schools for private organizations. This is our non-public money for our secondary schools. And so this only secondary would have these funds in our budget. And that is all I have. Our second public hearing will be on the 7th of September at 5:00 p.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and thank you, Ms. Gray, and our staff that are working on our budget for the next year. I'll just make note of a couple of things that Ms. Williams mentioned for you, Mr. President, members of the board. If you look across the state at the top 10 school district size-wise, eight of those average somewhere between 12 and 13% of their population in their school district. We run about 21 or 22% of the population of Madison having a student in the school district. And that's significant because as you look at your community and the environment that you have in the school district, that's one of the highest in the state. The second thing is, is that Ms. Williams mentioned that is you're aware of, but for 20 years, 25 years, we have averaged 300 new students. And as Ms. Williams stated, we're paid for those students a year after they arrive. And to the tune this year of about $2.5 million of local money, that percentage of budget, every year, Madison local money that comes to the school district meets the needs of those students because the state will not send us the money for those students until next year. And so if you, if we lost 300 students, they would send us more money than the students that we had, wouldn't that be? You know, for a year. But, but by gaining and doing that consistently, then the district carries that cost of the growth upfront. And then I think the other thing that she mentioned is over the 25-year history, due to that enrollment increase, the boards have accepted the growth by adding seven facilities. And that that long-range cost of that capital outlay of $228 million is pretty significant. You know, sometimes we look around at other districts, and you see that they're able to do different things, but they haven't had to play, I always equate it to, if you woke up and added one more child every year to your house, how long would it be before you added a wing? Or maybe you had to buy a new house? And we've been adding significant members of our family that has caused that capital growth. Now, 20, in 2033, we'll see that start to move off. So we'll have a big meeting in 2033 from Ms. Williams to show that we've knocked off 2 or 3 million in debt service. And, but for the last 25 years, that hadn't happened. But that, that has grown because we have to match those students that are moving to our community. So I just want to say again, thank you to Ms. Williams and Ms. Gray and all of our staff. They, they meet with every department and talk about every line item to work on because we've got, you know, we've got to be conservative in the growth. I was in a meeting this, this week in Montgomery. There is some growth to the, to the revenues of the state, but not like we've experienced in the last three or four years, maybe, maybe 1% or 2%. That will have an impact on the state budget because the state takes a three-year average. They average that as a rolling reserve, and then they budget accordingly. So we, where we've had these great years of growth, and the state's been able to fund that, we could see some years coming down the road where, where there's some challenges in what the state can fund. And as you can see from what Ms. Williams presented, there are a lot of services that the state requires, the Numeracy Act. And it's a requirement by law. People, people pay attention to the fact that at the end of this school year, any third grader that's not reading on grade level that's tested will be held back. What they don't pay attention to is the half a million dollars incurred cost for us to provide summer programs for any student that's not benchmarking in grade two and three. And the same will be for the Literacy Act, the Numeracy Act, and transportation. So I applaud our team for the work that they do to take every penny they can and provide what I consider to be the best options for students and programs anywhere in the state. And so Ms. Williams, Ms. Gray, and all of our team, Dr. Zinkels here, Dr. Donaldson, and Dr. Dooley in the back with federal programs and EL. We pay about $770,000. We have almost 60 different languages that are spoken in the school district. And I think last year, we got a whopping $100,000 from the state or less. Okay. You know, so again, we're matching that by being strategic and hiring people. And, and our, Dr. Ja's not here tonight, but the work that goes on between our HR department and our finance department- but the work that goes on between our HR department and our finance department, all of that goes hand in hand to make sure that we're getting the most out of that money. And at the same time, staying physically strong. As we went to the bond market for our new elementary school, I'm proud to say that because of the leadership of our team, they raised our bond rating. And that was not the norm going through the bond ratings for a lot of folks during this time period. But they made a specific point that how they budget and how they look at these budgetary items on a, on a daily basis, that they're keeping up with the expenditures in each area on a daily basis and meeting and adapting the budget. And also Mr. Payans back there. And they talked about cybersecurity and the requirements that are there to ensure the financial securities that you have. And so those were impressive to them, as well as the, the budget that was going on, that was happening every day in the district. And I just want to say thank you, not, not just for the presentation, but for what's so deep inside it that allows us to have a strong budget.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We will now move into presentations. Dr. Nichols.
At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Vanoy and Ms. Downs to come. And they are going to rep, present our Boys and Girls State Representatives from this summer.
Dr. Nichols and School Board, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to recognize these outstanding young, young adults that have participated in a very important program of the American Legion. I'm the commander, and this is Gene, my vice commander, the American Legion Post 229 here in Madison. Have about 350 members, which is a relatively large post and very engaged in the community. And we have many programs, so I just want to show you. We have several programs. We engage with our youth in the community, both Boys State and Girls State. We also, which is of course the cornerstone of, of one of the major programs of the commi, of, with, with our youth. We also have a big rhetorical contest we have every year. We, we sponsor the two ROTC units, Bob Jones and James Clemmons ROTCs. We were the sponsor of a Girl Scout troop and Boy Scout troops. We're very engaged with the youth. We have a junior shooters, junior shooters program as well. And American Legion Baseball is a great program that engages our youth, gives our opportunity for our players to play during the summers. Today, we want to recognize these individuals that attended Boys and Girls State. Boys and Girls State, they're, they're held on separate weeks, but it's a week-long event that takes place within the state. This last year was at Troy University, and it was there the year before, and it'll be next year. Before, there's a Tuscaloosa. And each university has an opportunity to bid to host Boys and Girls State. They have an opportunity to spend a week down there and learn how state government works and meet some very influential, important people within the state government. And I'm gonna let one of the, one of our member, one of our Boys State attendees talk a little bit more about that. We had 10, 10 boys that attended Boys State this year. There's a total of 50, we do as a county, so we had 53 boys that went to Boys State. For, and that represented about 20% of all attendees within Boys State came from Madison County. And historically, we've done quite well. When they run for office, they held sometime very senior positions. We've had the, the governor a couple of times, lieutenant governor, Speaker of the House, because these represent, again, offices within the state government. While they're down there, they also have an opportunity to play sports. They, those that are in bands, they have a band that plays. They do community service projects. So it's a, it's a week full of activities for these young individuals, these young, young to participate. So, and I was, I'm sure that they're gonna attest that it was one of the highlights of their, of their high school years of being able to be a participant in this. And I encourage you to encourage your administrators within the two high schools to continue to participate because I think we really enjoy engaging with the youth, but I think they get at least as much out of it as we do. So with all that said, I'm gonna bring forward three of the Boys State attendees that are here today. And Dr. Nichols, if you'd join me, we're gonna give them our certificate. And then Gene's gonna talk just real quickly about, and she's gonna share what they accomplished while they were there, and then she'll talk about the Girls State. So we had Andrew Coker. Okay.
So, here you go. Drew, actually, he's representative of Bob Jones High School. He ran for state senator. He won state senator, and he was elected as the gubernatorial candidate for the Nationalist Party. But more importantly, Drew was awarded the Citizenship Award. So congratulations. Then we have Ben Lesman. There you go. Ben ran for the offices of Lieutenant Governor and Senator, and he won the senator's seat. And then finally, Landon. Landon Wyder. He, he ran for a seat in House of Representatives, and he won that position. He was also the Sergeant at Arms of the House and later appointed to the Board of Pardons and Pearls. Who's got the camera?
Oh.
Hey, boys, if you could just stay there for a minute. I'm gonna bring the girls up. So girls, just come stand, and I'll give you certificates after I introduce you each. So our Girls State candidates, first I want to say, as you guys know, some of you, we can only pick two girls from each of our high schools. The girls that applied last year, we had, it was more than a 50% increase. So it was a really, really tough decision. So these four young ladies, not only are they academically very impressive, but they're really, really well-rounded citizens. And that was, a lot of merit was given to that. So I'm really proud of these four. First one is Ashlyn Deal. She represented James Clemmons. Ashlyn ran for state treasurer, and she was elected to the head of the Parks and Rec. Lindy Kirby represented Bob Jones High School. She ran for the Nationalist Party Chair and Coroner, and she was appointed to the Rules Committee for the Nationalist Party. Kate Curry, also a delegate for Bob Jones. Kate ran for and won a position on the Board of Education. And finally, Finley Kozwarski, who represented James Clemmons. And Finley ran for and was elected to the position of the Andrews County Commissioner. So, thank you, ladies.
Now, Mr. Terrell not here to get you guys centered, but.
All right. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Drew Crocker, and I was one of the delegates who went to Boys State this summer. And I gotta say that that was one of the most incredible weeks, definitely of my summer, but of, of my life thus, thus far. Before going to Boys State, I had little interest in politics at all. Like, I knew nothing about it, wasn't interested, didn't know how our state ran at any level of any sort. And going to Boys State completely changed my perspective about that. It was just an incredible opportunity to learn how the Senate was run. I had the opportunity to participate in the Senate and learning some of those skills about networking and Robert's Rules of Order. This is how many of you guys used at this meeting that I hope to incorporate in even the leadership positions that I hold back at my school, which is super exciting, of all the, all the wonderful things. I had the opportunity to run for governor, and that was an incredible experience just by itself, learning those skills about networking and what was important to our state as a, as a whole. And I highly recommend this program to any junior boy who is, who's interested in politics or not even interested in politics at all, because it teaches you those crucial skills and just, you know, fires you up about just our government system and about meeting people and just pushes you a little bit out of your comfort zone that I think is, is so important in, in the students that, that Madison City has. And, you know, Madison City, you know, is definitely wants to inspire next generation of leaders. And I think that that's something that Boys State definitely does. So amazing experience, and I'm so glad I had the opportunity to go.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you.
What was your slogan when you was at Boys?
So as for running for governor, my dad had a, a slogan that he used back in, and I guess it was middle school or high school, I don't, back in the day. Yeah. And it was, get off your rocker and vote for Crocker. And that was, that was the one that I used at, at Boys State. And it was, it was fun. Nobody called me Drew. They all called me Crocker. That was the only way they remembered me. So it was, it was a wonderful experience.
Do you think you came back a changed person?
Absolutely. Oh, my goodness. And like I said, with, you know, I talked to Cameron Cummings before, and that's, that's your son. And he, he had a very successful experience at Boys State. And I learned a lot from him, even before the trip, about how to, to network with people and how to create, you know, promotional materials for the campaign. And a lot of the information that, that he taught me, I hope that I'll be able to, to, to teach to other people that are also interested in this and definitely changed in, in the way that I think about leadership positions and our political system in general. Just so, it makes me really excited about it, which is, just such a cool experience.
Awesome.
Well, congratulations to all of you, and, and all of you have my vote. Whatever you all decide to run for, they should let you do it. You're probably better than the folks we got. So, you know, except School Board. Except School Board. But if you're going to Montgomery, I'll take you all. I think that you, you would be great. And first of all, I appreciate you representing our school district. And it's obvious that those at your school and those in the American Legion that, that interviewed you and selected you for this, there was a reason. And it's because you're leaders every day at your respective school. And so certainly, we applaud you for that. And we know there are great things ahead for each of you in your future. So congratulations.
Hey, Dr. Nichols, I just wanted to ask, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but did none of, any of the girls want to say anything? Tell about your experience? You, okay. You sure? Lindy? Okay.
Well, let's just say this. Yeah.
And I, I say that because the Girls State is very different from the Boys State experience. For one thing, the girls have to dress up every day, don't you?
They do. So we walked the entire city in heels for five days and dresses. I would say Drew summed it up really well. Girls State, my biggest thing about Girls State was the connections that I made with people. My city was one of the smallest cities. We were the city of parks. Finley was actually in my city, and we only had 19. So, and they don't, they aren't kidding when they say you don't sleep at Girls State. I mean, I've never talked so much in my life. But it's just, you're really, you only know these girls for five days, but you're really, really connected with them, and they all have such interesting ideas. And you meet so many different people with different points of view. And I'm like Drew too. I did not know just about anything about our legal government system when I got to Girls State. And by the time I left, I could name both senators. And I had met the governor. But it was definitely, I would say, the most important and memorable thing about Girls State for me was making friends. We have a group chat. We still talk at least once a week. And you meet people that you're gonna know for the rest of your life, and they're really, really good people, and they're always gonna have your back. So, thank you.
Before you leave, do you feel that you're a changed person after attending Girls State?
Oh, absolutely. I'm definitely a lot more out of my shell. I've never been a dancer, but we had a red, white, and blue, like, USA party, and I definitely got down to Justin Bieber. Thank you.
Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Brown is next. He is here to introduce members of the Liberty Middle School S2S program that received national recognition recently.
Board, Dr. Nichols, thank you very much. A quick story, a lot of, may not know this about Mr. Brown, but I'm a military brat. I was born in England, my brother Nebraska, sister in Florida. It seemed like every year to two years, we were having to move. And the toughest thing about being a student in the military is the routes that you make and having to go into a totally different environment and make new friends. And I, I wish we would've had something like this when I was in school because that was probably the most challenging times, especially, I remember coming from Nebraska to Alabama, and wow, it was, it was tough. It was real tough. Besides safety in our schools, relationships is right there. And what this group and what these kids do and what they stand for, they make a difference each and every day. We talk about a transient community, and we have kids that come in on a daily basis. And these kids are here to meet them, to walk, to class to class. And probably the most important thing is to be able to have somebody to have lunch with, to sit down. And I'm telling you, with the leadership, and I want Nurse Tunstall and Ms. Mingus, if y'all would, please come forward. Come on. I will let these, these ladies, again, they're behind the scenes. They want no recognition, but I'm gonna tell you, their leadership, it can't be replaced in the difference that they've made. And some of these kids that are leading in our school were very, very shy. I can see them going to Boys State or Girls State. I can see it. And it's because of this leadership and the difference that these kids in this group make on a day in and day out basis. So Nurse Johnson, y'all come up and introduce this, this group and the awards that they achieved this past school year.
As you know, student to student is supposed to be student-led. So what I'm gonna do is ask the kids, members that are here, come up to introduce themselves. And then we've got a couple of them that would like to speak to tell you what we accomplished this year and the awards that Liberty was honored to win. You got on the growing chart.
They're not basketball, I promise.
Hello, my name's Dagan, Dagan Chaffin. I'm in eighth grade.
Come right up here. Dagan.
Hello, my name's Oliver Howard. I'm in seventh grade.
My name is John Allen Howard. I'm a freshman.
We still can heal.
He's still got eligibility.
I'm Garrett Walter, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Lucy Herndon, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Sophie Savant, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Leah Jump, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Addison Lakeford, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Mary Ann Herndon, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Dylan Abbey, and I am in seventh grade.
I'm Kate Miller, and I'm in eighth grade.
And I'm Grant Jockett, and I'm in eighth grade.
So you have to remember, a lot of, several of these that are seventh graders were sixth graders. Coming into the school as a sixth grader, matching with these eighth graders, it is, is, is hard. But I would, I got your list, Ms. Downs, per Girls and Boys State. Okay?
Good evening. We have continued a longstanding partnership with Meadows Elementary School at Fort Hood, Texas, and we visited the school in March during Read Across America Week. We illustrated books that students from Meadows wrote, and then we read their books to the class while we were in Texas. We got to read to kindergarteners, first graders, and second graders too. We got to read to kindergarteners, first graders and second graders too. While we were at Meadows, we also donated and stocked Little Free Libraries to the Fort Hood community. And we also built really hard robotics tracks for a competition at Meadows. We also had a book study with Meadows students and helped them to create PowerPoint presentations to try to convince Fort Hood soldiers to read their books.
So we did a lot of things this year to win the S2S Middle School Team of the Year Award. We regularly greet students on a daily basis when they come in from new states or just from a different school district in Alabama and make sure someone walks into the classes or eats lunch with them, like Mr. Brown said. And we hold three Veterans Day programs a year at LMS. And the veterans come to the eighth grade presentation and they also, we have a lunch for them after in the media center. We sold T-shirts to benefit childhood cancer awareness and donated the proceeds to St. Jude's and UAB Children's Hospitals. We sponsored several local children at Christmas and wrapped and delivered gifts to them. So we adopted a few children and made sure they got that. And my favorite is we play bingo a monthly at Veterans with Tub Band. That's definitely my favorite thing we did this year. And we hosted the Dana Lion Gala at Athens State University for LMS and military connected students and their families.
I'll turn around. I don't, I won't talk. Come up here. Not you. Yeah, he's standing back. We're getting him up here with you. First of all, I want to thank your sponsors. And I'm sure there are other students that couldn't be here tonight that are part of your group. And I know that when you went to the nationals, you won the middle school group of the year and also the, I think it's the Pete Taylor Award for partnership. Here's what I want to say to you. One day, all the awards will fade away and all the trophies and plaques will get dust on them. And people will wonder what they mean. But the lives that you change every day by being a friend and welcoming someone is eternal. It will be there as long as those young people that move into this community that are looking for somebody to get to know, have somebody like you waiting at the door and at the lunch table for them. And that there are not words or trophies that will show that. So I want to thank you for that because I know it takes an effort. Nobody just jumps out of their skin in middle school. I had a middle school daughter once. We can get really wrapped up and quiet, but you've taken the challenge to step out and do that. And because of that, you have changed lives. So thank you on behalf of all those kids that you've touched their lives that have moved to this community.
I will say, Mr. Brown teased you guys up pretty good though. I mean, you don't realize that when people come to a new school, all you need is just one friend that's to make you settle down and that means a lot. I got a question. Do you guys like have a list of names that you know? Do you have pictures of the students that's coming in? How do you know how to assign someone?
Do y'all know? Y'all know? I'm the school nurse. And I work closely with the front office. So Ms. Hone, who is our registrar along with her counselors, but Ms. Hone kind of feeds me information. And on Power School, it has a list of all kids that are incoming. It doesn't know when they come, but I, we try to match them up to where it's boy, boy, girl, girl. And I try to match them by grade. But in middle school, that is not always the case. But I match them by lunch. So if they go to A lunch, you know, I'll find somebody that's in A lunch. We sponsor a table in the cafeteria that these kids are responsible for working one day a week. Each, you know, like Kate has Monday and Grant might have Tuesday, but they sit at that table during their lunch hour. And any kid that's sitting alone, or if I get a bug in my ear that this student's struggling and just needs somebody to sit with, they'll go and invite them over to the S2S table. Invite you to come have lunch with us one day. Come to Liberty, see how it goes. Dr. Nichols is in there some and, but we'd love to have you see how good my kids, our kids are. Yeah. They are outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did they get a picture?
Mister, Mister, Mister Peck wants a picture. Here. Y'all get in the picture. Mr. Brown.
That's right. Picture organizer extraordinary.
You should have got her.
That's a good one. I tell you what.
All right, Dr. Nichols, we always appreciate those presentations and enjoy seeing, seeing all the, all the activities going on in the district.
Well, Mr. President, members of the board, I hate they all left. I have one more set of presentations. I'm very sorry there for all of you. And I do want to recognize that each of you in compliance with the laws of Alabama met your six hours of boardsmanship training this year. And I have a certificate for each of you.
Are you going to follow us up with S2S? I mean like S2.
At the end of the meeting, we will have Mr. Peck take your picture in the front for that. And then.
So this is a certificate for meeting the minimum that the law requires.
Yes. That's presented, presented to you. But then you all each go to extended trainings to go beyond what the law requires. And as you do that and gain hours, you gain levels of mastery in boardsmanship. And so, Mr. Holcamp, you have now reached the master year two. And for you to attach to your previous certificate. Mr. Newberry has gone to extra trainings and he has now received level one of the master. There you go. Congratulations.
Ms. Williams, I'm glad you weren't after us.
Any other presentations?
No, sir. Don't have any more.
All right, that will end presentations. And now we'll move into the time of the board meetings for public comments. Any that have signed up prior to the meeting to address the board and address the public, they are now invited to come up and, and speak when Ms. King calls it. Ms. King?
Mr. Hogan wrote with good C.
Although I did want to say, keep those certificates.
We were decluttering the house and recently found them all. And I'm going to have them framed and my wife said I can put them up in any bathroom I wanted to. Now seriously, it's nice to have the kids back in the school buses in the neighborhood. And y'all have done, once again, the whole system has done a great job in getting the school system started for the year. And I'm glad I'm not sitting up there with the budget challenges. 500 kids to try and forward load and pay for ahead of time without the state giving you any money is tough. But I appreciate what you all are doing. I appreciate whatever else, what else is in. Couple of days ago, I saw a presentation in the library on SROs. They're doing great things. Just a lot of, a lot of people are pulling heavy loads. So I want you to know that it is appreciated and everything that is being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not quite yet, board. Any other public comments, Ms. King? Thank you, Ms. King. That will close public comments and we will move into business action items. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, the items of the consent agenda containing A, minutes 23-19, August 15th of 2023. B, a master service agreement by and between Madison City Board and Scribbles Software for E-transcripts. C, an agreement by and between the Madison City Board and the OC Group for 12-month copier sales and service agreement for Liberty Middle School. D, facility use agreements for Madison City Schools. E, an agreement by and between the City Board and ChessKid.com for the goal membership for students for ChessKid. And F, a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and Alabama Disability Advocacy Program for compliance audits at the rate of $195 per hour.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Board, Dr. Nichols recommends approval of the consent agenda items A through F. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, an agreement by and between the City Board of Madison and interlocal purchasing systems for the iXL Learning, Inc. for a license agreement for the year from August 25th, 2023 to August 25th, 2024, the cost of $26,600.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and the interlocal purchasing systems. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Newberry and a second by Ms. Lesman. Discussion?
Dr. Donaldson, will you give an update? I know that this is coming out of curriculum department.
In 2019, we started using the iXL program for science grades six through eight, just as an additional practice component for students. It's been a great program to give our students some extra practice. The DODEA grant is, the funding ended with last school year. So we would like to continue using that program for our students in grades six through eight, science only, and then start to pay for it out of our instruction funds.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Any further business actions, Dr. Nichols?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Let's move to personnel actions then.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, list of substitutes for Madison City Schools.
Or the superintendent recommends approval of the list of substitutes for Madison City Schools. Is a group fine? Group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion?
Extending our substitute list, as the board will notice, we have 10 or 12 new and then about the same number of folks that are returning from the previous year. So our HR staff's been working pretty hard to post that and seek out interest and get more people involved in being on the substitute list. They also, as you know, we automated with the Red Rover system this year. So far, that seems to have gone well, some good feedback from our staff and that it's been very helpful for them. And it also has been helpful and informative for our administrative teams to know if there's an opening that hasn't been picked up so that they can work with their long-term sub and their sub person at each school.
Excellent. Anything further? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, supplemental contracts for work to be performed for Madison City Schools.
Or the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts for work performed for Madison City Schools. Can these be taken as a group also? Group being fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Cummings. Discussion?
Most of these are pretty standard for this time of the year. A lot of Title I tutors, after-school tutors, extended day work, as well as several coaches for sports that are coming up, as well as other sponsors for different activities that we have at the school.
Anything else, board? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval, the remainder of the personnel items listed before you.
Or the superintendent recommends approval of the personnel actions that you had before you. Can these be taken as a group? Group fine, can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Cummings. Discussion? No discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Personnel actions pass. Dr. Nichols, are there any this evening that you'd like to call attention to?
I would. I'd like to introduce to the board Caitlin Herman. Caitlin has been serving, Caitlin, come on up, has been serving as our federal program specialist for about the past year and a half. And tonight, the board has approved to move her to be the assistant coordinator of federal programs. Caitlin is currently working on her educational leadership as a doctoral candidate at the University of Alabama. And prior to that though, served as an English teacher here for eight years in the district before moving into her specialist role in federal programs. And so as the board knows, our federal programs requirements are growing along with our EL and other areas that we have and our grants that we have. And Caitlin has been vital working with Dr. Dooley and we're very excited about this new role that she will, will take. Caitlin?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I appreciate that. And thank you so much to the board for approving this position and allowing us to grow in federal programs. I also just want to thank you for all your support over the years. I mean, you guys have been in my classroom for observations. You've been to athletic events that I've coached and you'd have seen me as a summer learning director and now here, growing still. And so I've appreciated all your support over the years in those various capacities. And a big thank you to the team at Central Office and especially in instruction for all your support and helping me grow professionally. So again, thank you so much and I'm, I'm very excited to be in this new role and continue to support Madison City. Thank you.
Anything else on personnel, Dr. Nichols?
No, sir, Mr. President.
All right, we'll move into, that'll close our action items and we'll move into superintendent comments.
Well, first of all, again, I want to thank Ms. Williams, Ms. Gray and our finance team for the work that they've put in to prepare our budget. Also coming soon will be the capital plan. Appreciate Mr. Jones and Mr. Gunner, as well as Ms. Williams and Ms. Gray and others who have worked on that. But again, as I say, they do an excellent job of involving everybody in this process. And so, you know, instruction, Dr. Donaldson and federal programs, Dr. Dooley, Dr. Zinkle and all of our department heads as they work on looking at our budget and how we can utilize it. Certainly appreciate them and the work that they do in preparation of that. Also, we've had a great start. It's been a little warm this week. I was in a meeting. I was in a meeting, as I said, in Montgomery. And one of the discussions down there was air conditioning on school buses. 48% of the school buses in Alabama have air conditioning. I'm proud to say that our school buses are in that 48%. And that there was a great discussion about asking the legislature to increase the rate that they provide for buses. The rate that they currently give not only doesn't make the total cost for the whole bus in a 10-year amount of time, but it certainly would not allow for folks to get an air-conditioned bus. And so, you know, we're very blessed in our community to have the local revenues that we have. And we made that decision as we purchased those buses to make sure that they had air conditioning. But there are 52% of the Alabama children that ride on school buses this week that did not have that. And their districts in many of those cases don't have funds to do that with. They don't have the local revenue to do that. So hopefully, that's going to be something that's really going to get pushed in the next legislative session to look at that. Someone talked about retrofitting. The number of buses to be retrofitted, it would take 30 years just to get the supplies. So, you know, that was a big topic. But I appreciate our staff. You know, our drivers get there, they get there early, they try to cool the buses down. Our maintenance teams there are working on those to make sure they're up and running. But that also is true across the district of our HVAC systems. And so, I certainly appreciate all of our staff, our plant managers and our mechanical staff for doing that. And also, we have been very conscious of after-school activities. You know, tonight, we have volleyball games. We have the first Journey Liberty volleyball game. I'm going to try to get to that. We have the Bob Jones volleyball game at 6 o'clock. We had a cross-country meet that started for the Bob Jones team. And tonight, in a few minutes, we'll have the first football game. So, you know, there's a lot of activities that are going on. And our coaches, the training staff we have, our administrators, all have been very conscious this week and reminding each other to be weather-aware in this heat. But also, I'm glad that when we play volleyball, I've been to some volleyball matches in places where they had to bring out, y'all know what I'm talking about, the big fans, and put them at each end because the gyms were not air-conditioned. And so, we have that opportunity to have those air-conditioned facilities and for our athletes where we can. It's not a lot we can do about air conditioning at a football game or a cross-country meet. But we will make sure that we have a lot of fluids available, that our trainers and that are provided to us work with our coaches to make sure and look at that. And I just want to thank all of our staff across the district for them being weather-aware during this. Hopefully, we'll get a break next week. And then we'll get into January and it'll be negative 10. And we'll wonder about heat. So, but we'll get there. Maybe the fall will start. But I just, I certainly appreciate our nurses and everybody that has worked on that. A lot of activities, I won't even get into all those, just we had a great start. And, you know, we're certainly, certainly appreciate all of our staff for working and getting our kids assimilated. As I said last board meeting, when you add 500 kids over about two weeks, it's everybody working to do that. And I certainly was touched by our S2S programs and what they're doing for our students across our district. Again, I will say that I'm proud that every school in Madison, and we're starting that program at Journey, has a club that is organized to do that. And they help to assimilate military kids, but they look for every kid that moves in and try to find them a place. And I certainly am appreciative of those sponsors that do that. So, great start to the school year. Thank you, Officer Kern, for being with us. He's at Journey. I don't know who's over there watching the ballgame right now, but I'm sure we have somebody, don't? Guy one of James Clemens folks over there, okay. So certainly appreciate our SROs. And adding our security staff has been a great benefit this year in our elementary schools. And I certainly appreciate Dr. West working on that. Again, all things go back to the Finance Department and HR Department. So they helped to figure out that money. And we certainly appreciate the work they're doing.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Move into board comments. Mr. Overcash?
All right, I'd like to echo an outstanding presentation on the budget. Not to mention the outstanding budget behind it, but I thought that was a really, in the theme of celebrating Madison lay, I thought that was an excellent presentation that kind of narrowed on our budget and all the hard work that everybody does all across all the departments and schools. Sometimes it's a struggle, but we're blessed to have a sustainable budget that we can work with. I was really impressed with the Boys and Girls State candidates. They seem like outstanding young men and women. And they can have our jobs one day, you know, just a little bit older. But what really impressed me was the S2S. I hope we have something like that at almost every school. I imagine in elementary school, kids being what they are, it's probably not as important. But, and maybe middle school is the hardest place, you know. But I would hope we have something similar like that in almost every school because that would, I mean, I grew up, there were two elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And you pretty much knew everybody by the time you got too many years into it. So I thought that was an outstanding program. And let's see. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. Mr. Newberry?
Echo the great budget, the great budget presentation. I mean, we got, the budget was maybe five or six slides, but like that's budgets from 13 schools all rolled up into those. I mean, there's a ton of work that goes behind that. And so, thank y'all, the entire department, thank y'all. The, I also echo, you know, presentations are always good. Sometimes, well, most of them are celebratory or congratulatory. This one leaned more towards one of those feel-good presentations. And so, I just wanted to congratulate the Boys and Girls State. And S2S is a great program. And I think that's all I've got tonight. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Ms. Lesman?
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Gray, for putting together that presentation. There's a lot of legwork that goes into it. And we appreciate you in keeping us straight with our budget. And I too was very impressed with our Boy State, Girl State. That is such a great program. And if you have a junior and you're watching this, that is a really good program for the girls and the boys, especially, you know, different colleges. They really look at that. And it was impressive that all of them got, they won a position. So that means all of them ran because you don't necessarily have to run. And that's really putting yourself out there. So I was really impressed with our students to do that. And as far as the S2S students, this was just a great night. I'm so glad you recognized, made them recognize, I should say, Dr. Nichols, what an impact they're making. Because just, just like you said, just a hello in the hallway when you're that age and you don't know anybody, it really makes a difference and makes their day. And sometimes they can look back and it changes their lives. And I could tell some of these students didn't even realize that that's what they're doing. They're just, you know, being friendly. But it's a huge impact. So, great night. Glad to be back in school. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Cummings?
I tell you, I'm full of all kinds of things that I want to say tonight. I tell you, Ms. Williams, I just want to thank you and the finance team. You guys did an excellent job of presenting that information. And I love the celebrate Madison theme and then who are we theme. And one of the things that you had listed where we ranked financially between like 100 and 140 throughout the state, but academically, we're competing top in the state. And I think that speaks volume to the leadership that's been in the Madison City school system the past 25 years of the things that we're accomplishing with funding based between 100 and 140 throughout the state. I just think that speaks volumes and an excellent job of presenting that information. You know, there was, I did like the slide with the special education program and the transportation program. And I think that shows a commitment from Madison City to make sure to go over and beyond what we think we need to do for all students. You know, of course, with, you know, making news, the problems that we're having with bus systems and the bus transportation and bus drivers. Of course, I wanted to pick up the phone and call the president and say, hey, we need to call the superintendent. But I said, Travis, they already working on that. I don't have to worry about it. And it's just amazing the success that we know we have in our Transportation Department and how they winning awards. And then the things that they do as far as how our bus systems are ranked mechanically throughout the state. It's just outstanding, but it goes to speak to every piece of this Madison City school. It's all puts together to make this outstanding system. Boy State, I tell you, and that's why I asked the question. I kind of wish we had a little more time with them because I know they came back different people. And I'm talking about in a way that you walk in a different presence. So I had an opportunity to see Ben and I met, get off your rock and vote for Crocker. And you can see those are completely different people where they walk with a different confidence. And that's the opportunity that Madison City Schools are giving our students. And it's just like, I mean, how can we get more students involved in this? You know, and I tell you, Mr. Brown, when he talked about S2S, and then you don't think about someone with his stature and his personality nervous about going into schools. And it made me reflect on myself when I went to different schools. I never thought, could I do the schoolwork? I always thought, am I going to know somebody at lunch? Am I going to, walking through the halls by yourself is one thing because you going to class. But in those public settings, if you standing by yourself, you can quickly get left behind. And I'm just outs proud of the programs that we have. And I think, didn't we get a military award for the S2S program?
We were the first district to have every school have an S2S program and receive the Purple Star.
There we go. Excellent, excellent. Well, Ms. Herman, congratulations on your position. It seemed like we watched you grow up. Because I think you introduced us to our first EL program when we was doing the walkthrough many years ago. And it's always good seeing you. And I tell you, what's also outstanding is the leadership that Madison City has to develop these rising stars. And then she stand before us already feeling that position and looking like she's ready for business. And I just, this is just an outstanding system. I just can't say it enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Yes, congratulations, Ms. Herman. Well deserved. But I guess we should really say, congratulations, Dr. Dooley. That I know you have to be as excited as anybody, probably more. And so, well deserved. You, as Mr. Cummings said, it's been great to see the promotion and growth, Mrs. Herman. Congratulations. Ms. Williams and Ms. Gray, thank you so much, as always, for keeping us where we are and always pushing forward, knowing when to say no and knowing when to say yes. And we just, we wouldn't be where, everything runs through finance. And we would not be where we are in this district without you guys and all of your staff. And just please, please give our thanks and congratulations to your entire staff. SRO Kern, appreciate you being with us here tonight and appreciate everything you do in the lives of our kids every day. We are so grateful for your service. I second the sentiment that we're so happy to have the schools full again. And, gosh, we're steadily, steadily closing in on mid-time of the first nine weeks. I mean, it's just, it's amazing how fast time flies. And so, congratulations to all of those that are working every day to brighten the lives of our students. I don't have, you look like you need to go back.
I have a go back.
I forgot to recognize someone.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sanderson. Recently, they put out a report of top attorneys across the nation. And the Lanier Ford firm had 40, how many were on that list? 17 of the partners, of which Mr. Sanderson was one, recognized across the country as outstanding attorneys. And we also had, Chris was on the list of up-and-comers, I guess they would call it. And so, certainly appreciate you and the folks that we get to work with. And congratulations on that recognition.
Another Spartan Boy State.
Oh, my goodness.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I did have a go back. I wanted to say something about these certificates. You know, our state-required education for the board members, it keeps us accountable. And, you know, just to, it speaks volumes that our board president is the master. And so, he went above and beyond and he's getting all his training. And congratulations to Mr. Newberry. So, you know, Alabama Association of School Boards provide this, provides this training. And I think it's great. And, you know, thanks for doing all that training, Mr. Hoecamp. We appreciate you.
Thank you. We went to the chess banquet the other night and met Fun Master Mike. Or you like Fun Master Tim now? I mean, do we have a title?
I've got a decal.
Okay, okay.
Can I get a go back?
No. We're going to stop this train right where it's at. Well, on September 7th, we have our finance committee meeting will be at 4:00. And that will be followed immediately with our board meeting at 5:00 and our second budget hearing here in the boardroom. And if there's, I'm not even going to ask. I need a motion and a second for adjourned.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Ms. Lesman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We're adjourned.
Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.